Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
6:00 PM on January 29th, 2025, I'm convening this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone recording the meeting? Seeing none, I will note for the record that participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. We'll begin with the Pledge of Legions. If you will enable, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now turn to the fiscal year departmental budget request, beginning with Town Hall. Oh, there's a shot. You're not on my right, you're on the left. Okay. So please, you can proceed.
Sure. Okay. I think you guys know the Town Hall budget and the Town Hall team very well, but this building is taken care of by four very capable people led by Jeff Peasey, along with Horatio Hemings, Al Duquette, and Herb Frazier. It's about 137 square feet, 137,000 square feet, and contains most of the town departments, among other facilities like our regional 911 dispatch center. And it was last renovated in about 1998. This team also supports a number of other municipal facilities around town. They kind of fill in where needed as things break or need to be repaired or maintained. And I think a main key portion of this budget is that we do receive a reimbursement from Shrek, the dispatch center, to offset some of the costs that are, you know, provided by our maintenance team for that facility. There are four folks. It is a beautiful facility, as you guys know. Just scrolling down to the budget. Again, so it's our team of four. There's a small contribution from Shrek this year. It's about $9,000. That was increased in FY '25 and FY '26 to kind of make up for the costs of things and services going up over the previous 10 years. And then down below, there's a lot of different line items here. The bigger ones are repair and maintenance of the building, custodial supplies, a lot of the utilities. It's a large facility, again, 137,000 square feet. In some of these cases, what we've budgeted is fine, we think, for FY '26 based on what we're running. The building is very, the utility costs are very weather dependent. So depending on the heat in the summer and the cold in the winter, that really affects our natural gas and water and sewer costs. Custodial supplies, Jeff and his team always manage to, so he's fine right there. And then we have a few small line items in here for some of the other properties that I mentioned, 301 Cushing Street, 30 Summer Street, and then the Tree and Park Barn downtown. One thing that our office is going to work on this coming year is staying more on top of collecting some of the revenue from the tenants that use those facilities, 301 Cushing in general, and make sure that we're invoicing for some of those facilities in a timely manner. But overall, you're looking at a 2.7 increase in personnel services and a small increase in expenses of 0.5%.
Michelle, does Town Hall encompass the area used by the school administration?
It does, yes.
And is the town reimbursed for those expenses?
No, we're not.
That's not the answer I expected.
The school department does reimburse part of our IT team, part of those salaries for the IT support that's provided in the facility. The maintenance and other pieces are not separately billed to them.
And the current Center for Active Living is also in Town Hall?
That's correct.
I guess that's part of the municipal side, so there'd be no reimbursement.
That's right.
Are the costs associated with the part of Town Hall that they occupy, is that in their budget or is it in the Town Hall budget?
Most things are centralized here. So like the Center for Active Living, the Police Department, REC, there aren't separate utility bills for them. Shrek is kind of the one exception where they do pay separately for some of their utility costs.
And if it turns out that the Center for Active Living moves out of Town Hall, the police move out of Town Hall, and Shrek moves down, perhaps occupying more space where the police department is, do we have any projections on the revenue associated that may be associated with that? I assume larger space, increased rent, that's what?
That's something we can look at in terms of, you know, this space that Shrek may occupy and what a fair, you know, calculation for for those costs would be. Shrek does reimburse the town for these maintenance costs, for a portion of the services provided by our accounting department to them. They pay like a bit of rent in general to the town, and then they do cover some of their own utility bills.
Got it. Great. Liz?
Thank you, Michelle. I have a question about Shrek, so maybe it's directed at Tom. Last week or the week before, we talked about the portions that each town pays. That is separate than this, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so this is rent and utilities, separate from that agreement. Okay. Are there any capital projects or any capital outlay requests?
Yes, there's, I believe we have six requests for Town Hall this year, to be determined which ones will be funded through the Capital Outlay Committee. You always see at this point in the process all the zeros at the bottom there, just because when they make their recommendations, we'll fill those in in terms of what's going to go to the budget. But there's always, there's always about $25,000 that the team requests to be able to take care of different things in the building, like refinishing the floors, replacing the stair landings, you know, the bathroom fixtures and things like that. They've been replacing all the heat pumps in the building over a period of time, all our original, too, when the building was renovated. And then they've done elevator repairs. They have a request about repaving the parking lot. So they do have a five-year capital plan that we are working through with the Capital Outlay Committee.
Okay, so all of those will be updated, building improvements, repair and maintenance, and heat pumps?
Yes, so whatever money is approved through that process, you'll see will kind of pop in at the bottom there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bill, I just had two questions. So on the Tree and Park Barn expenses, so the tenant covers all of that, is that correct?
Pretty much. So we basically, there's some things that the town pays for and he reimburses us. So he comes in and drops off checks for, and then every once in a while, there's some sort of repair that wouldn't be covered by the lease. Then that's why we have a small amount of money just in case things like that pop up. But for the most part, the tenant is responsible for, you know, the utilities there and for smaller repairs and maintenance of the building.
Okay, great. And the service for the alarm system costs $10,000 a year, huh?
Yes.
So that's the fire alarm system that's operated up and it's actually based in the attic, but it's for, it's got a connection to nine with one obviously this building. It does, it does things beyond just like alarm in the building. Oh.
It's like, it does things beyond just alarm in the building. It's tied to a bunch of services. Do you remember how the chief explained it to me once? It's more than like an alarm system you would think of in a building. It's not just, you know, like a blare, a blary siren or whatever. It's electronic based. It reports out to all of the 911 services that need it.
Okay. And a question on the repair of the clocks. Is that Town Hall clocks or is that the rotary clock downtown that the merchants have been asking about? Do you know?
Those are sort of the town clocks. So it's like a small line item in case any, there's four or five of those, you know, like the church ones as well that the town is responsible for. So it's a small line item in case things come up, and they did in the last year, the downtown one. So I think that's, those ones were encumbered from last year. It's a little bit more than $800, but that's what that's there for. And then this team does, in their overtime budget, is responsible for the winding of the other clocks every week.
Great, thank you. So I have, I do want to think, want to echo what you said about Jeff and Horatio and the team. They're just fantastic. Not only do they go above and beyond at Town Hall, but you know, when Tom asks him to do things at JAR, they're always very willing to do it. Other buildings in town, they're always willing to help out, and they're just very personable, great people. So we're lucky that we have such a great custodial staff. So thank you.
I just want to piggyback on that. They are fantastic. They do everything we ask them, but they're also unbelievably skilled. They know this facility. Jeff treats this building like it's his, one of his children. Like he just knows it in and out, and he loves it, and it's fun to watch. And we're all the better for it. He's great.
We were doing something for capital, and he literally had the original invoices from like 1998 that something was installed. He knows every windowsill and doorknob and everything in the building and has kept all the records.
Great. And Horatio is my sparring partner, so it's perfect. But
I wonder who wins those matches.
Two out of three, huh? So Bill, I just want to, you mentioned the merchants had a concern about the clocks. Are they not in working order?
There's a clock across from St. Paul's Church. It's been there for a while. It was donated by a Rotary Club. When I was in the Rotary Club, probably goes back to like 2007, 2008. But the clock, it's, it hasn't been working properly, and it just stopped for a while. And the merchants, one of their asks were to fix that clock. So Heidi did a lot of work in trying to get someone to fix it. And unfortunate type of clock, it is, you need a real skill, a unique skill set to fix that clock. I think it was fixed, but I'm not sure of it, but I imagine.
Yes, it has been fixed. The entire internal workings of the clock had to be remade, actually, because it's so old. So.
Apparently by the one guy that
There's one person that can do it. So yes, we're kind of at his mercy, but it is.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I know that there was an ask by Father Nester to put it 10 minutes fast so people could check on time. That is a true story. He asked me if we could do that. I says, if people get church on time.
I don't know if Jeff and his team are going to do that, but.
We will move on to the Select Board. I'm sorry, please.
Vicky Donlin, 12 floor at Circle Hingham. As Chair of the REC Department, I just wanted to be clear that the REC does make all their own repairs in the, we don't pay for utilities, but I just want the Select Board to know all repairs are done in the REC property. Yes, so floors, painting, all of that. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky's right. The REC has partnered with us even on things like LED lights and heat pumps and things that, you know, affect the parts of the building that they use.
Okay, Select Board.
So the Select Board Office Budget, this is, in essence, me and my staff. Obviously, we all work for the three of you. I work for the three of you, they all work for me. The mission is complex, as you can imagine. It's, you know, generally day-to-day operations of the town. Like there's a lot that goes into that sentence, but that's generally what we do. It's about, just to give people a sense, about 300 employees across six public employee unions, 23 municipal departments and eight buildings, about 50 or so Select Board meetings a year that we support. And of course, all of the policies and goals that are set by this board. There's over 400 elected officials across some 70 boards and committees, which we also support as best we can. We manage all public communications. We prepare the annual budget, the Town Meeting Warrant, the annual Town Report. All procurement that the town has to done, has to have done, is done through our office. Citizen inquiries, public records requests, though I will note that Carol Falvey in the Clerk's office is actually the public records officer, but a lot of those requests come through our office. We manage all licensing and process all those requests. We liaise regularly with the state, local, and federal officials, and we coordinate also all of the legal activities of the town. I want to just jump to the budget. I think you all know the initiatives that we have. Okay, so the personnel expenses are, it's going up about 6.8% this year. This was a contract year for both my, or all three of us, myself, Art, and Michelle. So that's the reason for that jump. The expenses are down a smidge, about 0.1%. Michelle and I have gone through this budget pretty closely. There may be more cuts out of the expense side by the time I come back to you with my recommended budget, but we are lowering that, the expense side a little bit as well as we can. But otherwise, it's contractually obligated expenses, salaries.
Thank you. So I notice we have $0 for printing services. And how is that?
So that's not Town Meeting Printing Services? That's in the Town Meeting Budget?
Right.
Which is the majority of our printing. We, Michelle's dying to jump in.
I come to meetings and there's printed materials. I didn't know how it.
Yes, the printing services and the Town Report line items did the same thing. So we just come, it's really printing for the annual Town Report every year. So we really just consolidated it into Town Report a couple fiscal years ago. But otherwise, what you see in our office is through office supplies, you know, paper and other things like that.
And the only reason that line is still there, Joe, is we had from 2023, it was still in.
Okay. And we've talked about ways to address the costs of issuing the warrant.
Yes, we'll talk more about that tonight, but yeah.
Well, what about the Town Report?
Michelle, Liz and I just talked about that 15 minutes ago. Yeah, you know, we, I'll be frank, we print a lot of those reports and we throw a lot away every, of course, recycle them.
Of course. But to the extent that we can make it available online or on demand, it'd be nice to cut that budget a little bit.
Yeah, I agree.
The only difference is though, that the Town Report doesn't go to every household where the warrant does. And the warrant costs are about $30,000, you know, we're talking about a little bit, but you're right. I wonder if we can, I think maybe we should see how the warrant article goes, and then maybe we figure out a way to put it online and just fill out a request to get it. But where they're available, a library, Town Meeting, and Town Hall, correct?
Town Hall, and I think we do the Senior Center as well.
Senior Center? Have you ever?
Oh, I'm sorry. They are also provided to each of the departments as well.
Yeah.
Have you, have you been able to keep track of the number that we're printing and the number that are being actually taken by?
We haven't looked at that in the past. It's boxes and boxes every year. We tend, we generally keep two boxes worth just for, you know, because you never know, someone comes back a couple of years later and wants one. But yeah, we pitch a lot, way too many.
Yeah, that's what I figured. I mean, you go to Town Meeting, there are boxes there and they're at the end of the meeting, too.
And it's one of those things, right? It's the fear of these are, these were printed and they're information that the public might want. And I want to have them when the public wants them. But it's hard to judge what they're going to want and not want on any given year. Something, if interest comes up, all of a sudden, everybody wants every one of them ones we printed. So it's a, you know, it's a tough line to find, for sure.
I think we did print less in FY '24, if you look at the actual, but let me, we can double check our sharing, because I think we reduced the number. I thought there was a requirement that we have to provide it at Town Meeting, but I'm not sure. I'll check on that.
Okay. I mean, I would be, to echo what you were saying there, Joe, I would be, put a pin in that one and see how, see how the article and the warrant is received, and then circle back next year and say, okay, we're not going to print as many as we've been doing in the past. We can order and put them online. It's just bad for the environment. It's a, it's a cost we don't need. And like you said, pitching, pitching boxes in every year, just not good.
So Bill, any other questions?
No.
Okay, Liz?
No, no real questions. I do agree. I mean, we've talked about this with the, I think we should print less warrants, and I definitely think we should print less Town Reports. So I know we'll discuss that further. The others, actually, I do have a question. The consultant services and the communications team, can you explain the plan for that?
Right now, that line is just the, to fund in-house alternatives. The team of two that we work with, it's $3,000 a month as a contract for the support that they provide us.
Okay, and when is that contract up for renewal?
I have to check. I think it's in line with the fiscal year, but I'll double check.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Oh, and the, actually, the capital outlay, I know we had funding for the ADA signage. Has that been implemented?
It has. I believe, Art would know, he's been managing that. I believe it's implemented throughout the library and Town Hall. There was a couple of other buildings that we had extra money that we decided to expand the program into a couple of other buildings. I don't know if it's been fully implemented, Liz, but it's certainly been partially implemented.
Okay. It'd be nice to hear if we've received any feedback on that. I haven't heard anything or noticed, but.
I think a lot of that kind of signage is important to have. If you don't have it, it's missed. But when you do have it, people just don't really notice it. That's my guess, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will move to the discussion of possible votes on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. And I may wind up skipping to Article 00 first, Vicky. I don't know what your schedule is, but since you are here, I'd like to take advantage of your knowledge. So we are going to begin with Article 00, which is a high school bike walking path. And it's an idea that both Vicky and I have explored, not only between ourselves, but with the folks who run Wampatuck State Park. Vicky, maybe if you just give a, I would like you there, and I don't know if you've got something that we can show online?
Certainly people at home can look at it. Vicky Donlin, 12 floor at Circle. And I've been working with Joe on this bike path walking trail that we're talking about, but I want to little, give a little context. Back in 2015, a trails plan was done with all the trails throughout Hingham. It was a consulting project done by BSC, and that is online for people to view. Many people have always said, okay, now that it's on the shelf, when are we going to do something about it? We took a look at this. I happen to walk over at Wampatuck every day, and I've gotten quite friendly with Matt Tobin, who runs all operations. And we've chatted over the years, and he tells me Norwell and Cohasset are taking advantage of the opportunity to work with the state in providing more access through paths. So Joe brought this up, and we realized one of the paths that is very doable is what is known as Triphammer, basically Triphammer Pond. And
Just to be clear, that's not a path through the pond?
No, it's near the pond. And there actually is a path right now. I wish I had something to show you, but anyway, you can see this in the Trails Plan, because this was one of the trails that was looked at. We were able to get a meeting with the head of DCR Trails Planning, and he was not that well aware of Wampatuck, but we were able to share the location with him. We also, his name is Gerald Ottler, and Steve Duty from DCR. Matt Tobin was at that meeting. Joe and I were there. I believe George Dennis, and I believe Emily Wentworth was at that meeting. It was on by the phone. But anyway, they told us about reimbursable grants. Part of this path is already done by Wampatuck. And the goal is to get folks biking and walking off LaZelle, off the beginning of Union Street, getting them through Wampatuck, over to the high school. And believe it or not, it's very doable. We're talking about reimbursable grants, which is very nice, but as the state does with all its grants, the town must put forward the money for the consultant, which could also be in reverse. The consultant would design, lay out the plan, and give cost estimates for construction. We work then with the state as to how much they will do, how much is Wampatuck land, how much is Hingham's land. Then we decide, does the town want to move forward? So what we're proposing is a warrant article this year to provide, I've gotten a cost estimate of about $35,000 to design, layout, and cost, you know, create a cost estimate for this plan. So I don't know if that's, give some context to it.
That is perfect. One thing I want to add, which I think is a perspective that you brought, and I hadn't focused on directly, is that the current drive into Wampatuck takes you out onto Union Street at a very dangerous point, where there's a curve and you can't see, and you, I don't know, but you experience it almost every day.
I experienced it every day, the crosswalk that was put there. You might as well put, point fingers and hit Vicky as you're going by, because I've literally had so many people, it's not a good crosswalk. People don't see it. They take that.
Take the curve.
Take the curve very quickly. But this isn't about me. This is about the bikers who use it on a regular basis. Anyone who lives in Hingham knows that LaZelle Street is filled with walkers and bikers, and this would literally now, hopefully, they'd take advantage of it. But they literally would be able to get off LaZelle, off this curve on Union Street, go to this beautiful pathway, which, as I said, right now is there. The problem with the path that is there, the friends of Wampatuck have looked at it, it's too close to the pond. And so you couldn't build a path where it is right now, where people walk it all the time. It needs to be pulled in, but there is portion of that land that is already owned by the town. So we're not talking about buying land. We're not talking about doing anything other than getting a consultant, who we've really already started to do in this plan, and take it that next step to take this bite out of it. I've been given an approximate guess that we're talking about 3,794 feet. It's not a lot, and some of that is Wampatuck. And as I said, if we come up with a plan, Wampatuck or DCR is willing to pay for their portion of that, and the rest we would need to pay for, but then go back, and it is a grant, and we've got the grant person's name, and they couldn't have been more helpful, I think, Joe.
They couldn't be. And one of the observations that I had when I first moved to Hingham was, wouldn't it be nice if kids could bike to the high school? And this would provide an opportunity for those who are residing in South Hingham to access the park through various roads, and then to come out right at the high school. So I think that fulfills a long-term goal that I've had, and I think it really promotes safety in the town.
Correct. And I think as we take a bite out of this Trails Plan that has already been done for us, we have the option of sharing this and seeing how we can do pieces by pieces, because there are other schools that clearly that was the purpose of this plan, not just schools, obviously, connecting the wonderful open space that Hingham has. This plan, just so that everyone knows, was done before we purchased the Lainer property. So again, we have even more property that is available for this kind of safety plan.
Bill, do you have a map of it? I mean, because I'm just trying to figure out, so I'm obviously, I think this is a great idea, and Joe, thank you for your work. I can figure it too. But I mean, are you talking about you're going to run a path off of LaZelle through Wampatuck, and how do you get to the high school? So if you're going to go into Wampatuck?
Right, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I did not bring one.
Yeah.
What, Joe actually lives up there, so this is very much for Joe. So you would get off, you would go through Wampatuck at Huckleberry. So you're literally anything from South Pleasant.
That's South Pleasant Street.
No, 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 but it's across from that. Yes, I'm just giving to those who don't know where Huckleberry is. Everything, most people know where South Pleasant is. Let me just share this.
Oh, so that makes sense. So you would access on South Pleasant Street, so you would go into LaZelle?
Our red.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. It's just go for Hingham Trails Plan, and you go right to it. Again, it was always said that eventually it would get to the REC Department's website. I'd love to still see that happen as we take a piece out of this. You know, anytime we do a great plan like this, we should find how we're going to do it. This was a CPC project, so CPC paid for the Trails Plan. We then paid for some markings for each trail. Were you able to pull it up? That's right.
That's right here.
Page 63 is the Triphammer. I hope it's 63 there as well. But that way, thank you. I should have told you ahead of time. But you'll get to Triphammer.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
You can see other, other pieces, Plymouth River, all of these we're taking a look at. But this is, I mean, to me, this is the dream, because you have DCR ready and willing to work with us. And I like when you have somebody else who already wants to pay for something and is willing to do it. All we have to do is add.
All right, so I haven't had my answer, my question answered yet, though. So you go, you access.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You would access it on South Pleasant?
Yes.
That would cut you through, through into Wampatuck?
Correct. Then you're into Wampatuck. And for those of you who drive in, you don't go as far as the visitor's center, you go to the left.
Yep.
You go down that road, not too far, you take another left.
That's where the Turkey Trot is every year, right?
Yes. So you go in, you take a left, not a right. Turkey Trot goes to the right. This goes to the left. Part of that path is already done. You can all do this tomorrow if you'd like. A little snowy out there. If you keep following that path, you will go to Triphammer Pond. People walk it all the time. The problem is the path that is right there now. The problem is the path that is right there now cannot be, a path can't be constructed.
Understood. Okay, you got me there.
Right.
Then how are you going to connect Wampatuck to the high school?
It keeps going around. You follow Triphammer Pond, and it comes right out to behind the Hingham Driving Range. Plenty of space behind Hingham Driving Range, and it comes literally right out to a perfect space at Union Street where you cross right.
So you would need a new curb cut, essentially, to cross over.
Yeah. And then are you proposing a bike path on Union to get to the high school? Because that, when you come out, you're going to come to the covered bridge, right?
No, it's further down.
Okay, but it's close to it.
Yeah, it's close to, yes.
Close to it, right? And then are we going to propose, when you connect to the high school, would be a bike path on Union, or would you just go back to the road?
Well, either you're back to the road, I mean, it's considered a bike, I mean, it's considered bike safety now. Personally, I see most bikes on the sidewalk. It is a larger sidewalk than normal, but it does get you across the street where if it was a child, they could get across the street. They're on the sidewalk, and the high school is right.
I think, Bill, the question you're raising is something that the study would actually look at, if that makes sense.
Yeah, because Union's so narrow. I don't know if you could put a bike path on that, on that road. It's, I mean, it's a very narrow road.
No, but there's adequate area on the sidewalk, if you will, that you could have bike paths adjacent to the road, not taking road space.
I mean, it's, it's, it's sidewalks in decent condition. I just jogged there a couple, a couple weeks ago. I jogged from the high school down to the park, back, get into the park, back. But it was, I'm like, this sidewalk's in pretty good condition. And I think there is a crossing light at some point on Union near the park, correct?
That's the one.
That's the one that's dangerous. Very unsafe. And but again, this isn't about, this is about creating a better cross, crossing. And the crossing that we're talking about, I mean, obviously, the consultant testified, you have such great vision coming away from the high school and toward the high school, much better than is there now. It's, it's a, you know, straight road.
Yeah. Okay.
But this is what a consultant.
I mean, I guess we'll study. I would question the use. I mean, I mean, the amount of use. I mean, you're not going to, to get to the entrance on South Pleasant, you're coming down, where you're coming down that road by the town forest, there's no sidewalks there, right? You're coming off of, what's the street beyond LaZelle? Does LaZelle all go with?
Charles Street.
All right, Charles, right, Charles. It's dark, tight road.
Totally agree. But what we're doing is trying to take a little bite out of what this, the purpose of this trails plan was. And I'm agreeing with you. I don't see kids tomorrow riding to school. Do I see them the next generation? Boy, I hope so, because no one's riding those buses. So let's hope they eventually get into the biking mode that so many people in this country are trying to get to. And what this does is.
It's also might be expensive to ride the bus, based on what I'm reading the paper.
Well, I agree. My goal is, this is all a reimbursable grant, and DCR will pay for the portion that's Wampatuck. But without doing this small piece, which again, the consultancy is about 35,000, which if we do, it is reimbursed, you know, it's a reimbursable grant. But that is, that has been discussed, so it's, again, it's not Hingham deciding to create a path somewhere that we're in, have to pay for the whole thing.
Well, thank you for your legwork on it. I mean, I love baths, love bike baths, and it's going to be, going to be pavement, pavement, I could be bike path pavement, right?
Well, I mean, that, in fact, is one of the questions. They went pervious, pervious. So we're not prejudging that one.
Okay, thank you.
Liz.
Thank you for the work, Joe and Vicky. Question about the consultant to develop the plan. Is that a requirement of the grant? Or I'm not familiar with the trail plan, so I'm not sure if you could just take this and then design it, or is that interim consultancy?
It would require a separate consultancy, yes.
Okay. I'm certainly open to exploring this. I would want to understand more of the design and the use and accessibility and the overall cost. But I think in general, you know, certainly safer streets and walking and biking paths is certainly aligned with what we want to accomplish.
And I think when we go to AdCom, we'd have a map, so.
Yes.
Be clear.
And this is the best, thank you.
Yep.
I would ask everyone to look at this plan and see, how do we move forward on this? And this was actually brought to us by Bob Curley, who would love to see this all done. But to take a bite out of it is how the town should get started. And finding, you know, how do you connect these places? This is one that was already done, and I understand your questioning, why does it need to be done again? Again, it's the path that's there now. Nobody was looking at it as creating what we're calling more of a, either asphalt, concrete, pervious. That would have to be brought away from Triphammer Pond. So that's the difference. Right now, it would be difficult to, you could walk this, people walk it all the time.
Sure.
But biking it would not be something.
Okay. And have any of the neighbors or butters been notified, or this would be the first time people are hearing about this?
This would be the first, there's only really one butter that I know of in the plan. Everything else is owned by Hingham. We own it all. Isn't that nice?
Excellent. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, Tom, anything you wanted to add, or Michelle?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Then I am prepared to accept the motion on Article 00.
I make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 00.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Thank you.
Joe, we do DD next.
We can do DD. Second here. Article DD, repair construction of town pier wharf and the inner harbor structures. Looks like we have JR here.
Good evening, Joe.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you today?
Very well. So please tell us what Article DD is about. Vicky, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. In 2021, at town meeting, the town authorized the expenditure of 5.65 million dollars towards, specifically towards repair and reconstruction of town wharf. As you are well aware, you've been a part of the process throughout. We've run into some various permitting challenges, and there's also been inflationary pressures. The 5.65 million will no longer cover the cost of the town wharf. However, through our permitting process, we've identified smaller discreet projects that support our efforts towards resiliency in the inner harbor. And by, by the town authorizing a broader use of these funds, it will enable us to move forward in a responsible, steady fashion and begin some of that work along an earlier timeline than we'd otherwise be able to.
So if we did not implement Article DD, how would that limit our ability to expend these funds?
I would only be able to expend those funds towards the reconstruction of town wharf as the project currently exists today. And the actual cost of that project
Right.
is now significantly higher than that. So the authorization would remain, but it would require supplemental authorization for us to move forward and use any of those funds.
Yep. And so we can now do any of the other inner harbor structures.
Correct.
Bill, any questions?
I'm pretty familiar with this, with this project, so I don't have any questions this time. Thank you.
Liz?
Just thank you, JR, for being here. So just to clarify, we're not appropriating any new funds, but this is allowing us to use it on any other inner harbor structures.
That's correct. In particular, we'd be looking at dunes behind Bathing Beach. We'd be looking at dunes and building up the parking lot for the boat ramp. There's a smaller discreet project. I don't think the permitting will be quite ready for anything imminent, but there's a potential storm gate.
More questions? So I see that this is inserted at the request of the Harbor Development Committee, so I'm assuming this follows the Harbor Development Master Plan?
Yes, it does.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Tom, anything else you want to add?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you. Good job, dear.
Okay, then I am prepared to accept the motion.
I, where is it?
Article DD.
I will make a motion to, a favorable motion to recommend, sorry. I will make a motion for favorable action on Article DD.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. JR, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move to Article L, acceptance of and granting of easements.
So annually, this is, this is an annual article. Acceptance of easements is usually what we do. It's so we can keep projects moving during the course of the year, when the town receives requests to, from private owners to relocate easements, for instance. And from, usually, these requests come to the Public Works Department when they're, when they're out doing their, their job. They get, they have a need for easements on a regular basis. The change this year, and what we're adding in here, if the board was in agreement, is to add the possibility to grant additional easements. And that's new, but what we're thinking is that we would work with AdCom on the recommended motion, to the extent they were in favor of it, to really limit that to, to town projects, where the town needs to have a grant. In other words, Joe, what was the example we had the other day? It was really, it was very appropriate. Do you remember what we used?
Foster, the needed one for Foster.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There was, that's right. We had to, we had to grant an easement to a utility company for the development of Foster. If we had to wait another year for, for the right to grant that easement, it could have, it could have cost the town a lot of money. So anyway.
Yeah, but we're talking about easements with respect to water, drainage, sewer, things like the utilities.
Yes.
But not broader easements.
That's right, very specific.
A broad easement could actually almost convey full use of property. So the language that I think for accepting grants is fine, but for granting, where we have the tagline, or any public purpose, sort of is, I think, a little too broad for what we want for grant easements.
Yep.
So let's see, do we want to, so I don't know if we want to cure this in the, at AdCom with the recommended motion, or cure it here with the?
I was contemplating the AdCom wrote.
Okay.
Root, and should something happen that you all are uncomfortable with, you can always pull it off a warrant.
And this is the language that John came up with?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right. He recognizes the intent is to limit it very narrowly to the utility easements, in order to keep projects moving.
Right.
It's the whole purpose.
And for a one-year period, just for the coming?
Yeah, for that one year. And then, so he would work with, and he would work with the AdCom liaison to set the motion, so that it's that narrow.
What do you mean for that one year?
The, it's an perennial article, because it's the, the mission is only granted for one year.
Right, but once the easement is granted, it's.
Yes. Yes.
Goes on.
Yeah, but, but the right to grant easements is not perpetual.
Right.
It's granted annually. So it's a change.
Right.
We also don't need to do this.
No, no, no. I think it's important, because we don't want to have projects held up. Bill, do you have any?
I kept a comment, yeah, obviously, I'm for it. But I don't think it should be narrowing scope. I mean, if we're granting a utility easement for water drainage, sewer, and other utility purposes, we need broader discretion. I mean, we grant those easements to help our residents with services, and narrowing our scope, I don't think serves the best interest of the board or the town. But I'm fine with it as it is. Maybe we need to keep it narrow this year, but obviously, as the example you gave, by Foster, if we didn't have the ability to do that, we wouldn't have been open, we wouldn't have opened that school in January. So things come up all the time with capital projects. We're about to build, hopefully, a state-of-the-art center for active living. We don't know what's going to come up, so we need the ability to make decisions that are going to be in the best interest of our town and our residents. And these, this category of easements, you know, are things that people need, and things come up all the time. We need the ability to be able to pivot and make, make quick decisions.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the concern is, so right now, if there's going to be a transfer of public land, it needs town meeting approval. An easement, a broad easement can in fact act as a transfer of that land. So that's the line that we need to walk, to the extent that town meeting needs to vote on a transfer of the land. If you grant an easement to a third party that effectively transfers the land to them, you know, I think going beyond what town meeting expects, which is that they would vote on the transfer, that, that's the limit that I'm looking to impose.
Well, what we could do is, we could, I could have Attorney Crawford available for all three of you, and you could walk through some ideas, plus pros and cons, plus the minuses, and see if this language works, or if there's better language.
Yeah, I mean, I think Bill's point is, is important, that we do need to have the discretion to move forward with projects. But we should not have discretion essentially to transfer town land without the permission of town meeting.
A lot of towns have two town meetings a year, so that that danger is more mitigated.
Right.
Where we only have one a year, having to wait a year to do a thing.
Right.
Can be pretty impactful.
Agreed, agreed. And I think with respect to the Center for Active Living, that this is going to be an issue that we're going to have to address.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with you about the transfer of land. I think that is clearly town meeting's authority, not ours. But I'm focused more on things related to that project, you know, where it says here, uncomplete roadways and other public works projects.
Right.
That things come up all the time, that we need, we need to be able to move quickly on and have discretion. And, you know, we make these decisions because the residents need these services or utilities. So I think we should have broader discretion if we can get it.
Yep.
But transfer of land, I agree with 100%. That's going to be town meeting vote.
Yeah, that was the whole idea. You were absolutely right, Bill.
I agree that this is important. I'm not comfortable just wordsmithing this on the fly or leaving it to AdCom to do, make the decision.
So we can hold off on this and perhaps.
Bring it back on the phone.
Good.
Thank you.
So we will hold off on a vote on L, and we will move to Article X.
So Article X is a, an article that would allow us to transfer the proceeds received from the sale of tax title land into a capital stabilization fund. And we've done this now, we had, we had an auction this year where we sold three properties. We have proceeds from one of those sales. The other two are held up as they move through the process, but we have the proceeds from one of them that was $45,000 when we first created, or when, Michelle, can you walk me through the history of the, walk them through the history of the idea of funding this into the capital?
Right. So when we created this fund, maybe two years ago, it's automatically fed with the proceeds when we sell surplus supplies and things like that. It is not automatically fed by the sale of real property. But we're always looking for just different ways to augment the capital budget, and this is a new process for us. And so it's just a way to turn, turn the money that Tom's talking about into additional funds to support capital projects in town. There's about $30,000, $32,000 in the fund right now, some of which we're recommending that capital outlays this year.
No, I think this is a good idea. Bill, any?
I think it's a good idea, too. Yeah.
Liz? Exactly. Okay, then I am prepared to take a motion on Article X.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article X.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
I am an aye as well. We can move. Now, we've deferred L, we've done X, we've done DD, we now go to KK.
So KK is a continuation of a conversation we had a little while ago. This is, you know, we print a lot of warrants, over 10. This is, you know, we print a lot of warrants, over 10,000 warrants every year. We mail on to every household, you know, Randy Sylvester regularly comments about how most of them show up the following week in the recycling bins at the transfer station. It's, a lot of people, much to my chagrin, are not overly interested in reading about our annual town warrant. And it feels excessive and wasteful to print and mail all of those warrants. We spend about $33,000 a year in, in that effort. I think if, what we're proposing here is to, instead of mailing them to everybody, we let people opt in, they could hop online, they could opt in to a program that would allow them to sign up to have a warrant mailed to their home, which of course we would do. And it also, we would put the, we would post the warrant every year to the town's website. And, and we would send it to an electronic version of a, of a, you know, media, whatever, media outlet.
Yep. So how, so if I'm a resident, how would I know the process for getting town the, the warrant? If I don't go to Town Hall, and I typically don't get emails.
Right.
How, how do I know?
Yeah, we would attempt to do our usual approach, communicating to the public through websites, social media.
So I just said I don't, I don't do, I don't do that, I don't get emails and... So, so there's a variation of this that Tom, you and I, that I suggested, which is, town, instead of sending out the warrant, it's about a postcard. And the postcard can have a QR code, and I get them all the time, and they focus with your camera on your phone, all of a sudden, get the warrant there. And the postcard could also say, you can call. And it'll also say on the website where you go. So we could then notify folks, I think it'd be a lot cheaper doing a postcard than doing the warrant. We wouldn't save on the postage, although postcard postage is a lot cheaper than the other postage.
It would still be cheaper overall, for sure.
Yeah, and then we, we, I think, succeed in notifying folks. And quite frankly, I mean, I go to restaurants and the menu is, get the QR code and you order.
That's right.
And this is another way to do it. And, and quite frankly, I think people at Town Meeting would wind up getting that QR code and pulling it up right at Town Meeting. So I would suggest that as an alternative to what's being proposed here.
I will note, and I didn't say, I do think, that aside, I do think we would also print enough warrants to have at Town Hall, at Senior Center, at the library, so people can go and pick them up should they want to. Sorry, this didn't say that.
I agree. Liz, any, any thoughts?
I, I agree, I, one of my goals is to reduce the cost of Town Meeting. I'm very curious about the towns that can afford to do it twice a year, because it's astronomical at this point. So I want to think about how we can be more...
I do want to think about how we can be more efficient with Town Meeting in getting people there, as well as reducing the cost, because it is quite costly to the town. I am definitely in favor of having a lesser amount of warrants printed and having electronic copies. To your, I think where you were going with the postcard, Joe, is the warrant serves as a notice of Town Meeting. Right, it's not just outlining the articles, it's how people know that Town Meeting is happening. So I think some sort of mailing has, whether it's a postcard or not, has to occur. And the media outlets, I don't know what, what we're referring to, if it's the Hingham Anchor or we're trying to print it in the Hingham Journal or...
That's where we were going, I just didn't want to define it, because sometimes they change.
Okay.
That's right.
So I'm, I like this, this article. I think it needs a little more work, but I'd like to see it in this Town Meeting, as well as some other creative ways to increase engagement at Town Meeting.
Bill?
Yeah, so I definitely like the idea of it, you know, to Liz, your point, we talked it like last week about Town Meeting costing $50,000 a night, right? So you get $50,000 a night, last year we had three, three nights of Town Meeting. Third night probably wasn't 50, but that's a lot of money for Town Meeting. These are other costs related to it.
That's on top of it.
Right, that's on top of this, right? So you're looking at $33,000 to print warrants. Now, I'm always going to like a hard copy of my warrant.
Right.
Shit, just me, but I can come to Town Hall and pick it up. I think what we need to do is, to both of your points, is we do the mailing this year to let people know that going forward, we're not going to be sending it to your house, right? And the QR code's a good idea. I think we need like a Town Meeting app, where we put the town report and the warrant, both on an app, similar to the app we just used at the MMA conference last year, or something like that. So I, I, in the wording of it, I don't want to restrict ourselves to that technology specifically.
Right.
Like, technology's going to advance over time.
That's the danger, that's exactly.
And as it advances, we'll advance with it. Like, we'll go to an app and we'll have everything there, your Town, Town Meeting app, to save us even more money. But I like the idea of having it website, copies at Town Hall, copies at the library for those who like it, and the QR code for those who wanted to just use the app. But the language probably needs to, needs to incorporate evolution of technology.
Okay.
So we don't have to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know how to best to do that right now, but maybe we can talk about that. But the sentiment of the article is great.
Okay, great.
Have you looked at adding it to the MyHingham app?
We have not. I'm sure it can be done.
I'm sure it can be done. We should probably start, yeah, that's a great idea, Bill.
Yeah.
So I think, at least what I'm hearing is, we're not comfortable with the wording that's going to be proposed in Article KK, but we want to move forward with the concept.
The concept, yes.
So we're going to hold off voting on that and hopefully...
Sure, yeah, we'll remake it and then talk to you all and get it back out.
Joe, there is one raised hand if you're entertaining comments.
I'm sorry.
Brenda Black.
Brenda, yes, I see your hand. Is your mic on? Brenda, we, we see your name, but we don't, we're not hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can, thank you. If you could just give us your name and residence, please.
Two, Whitcomb Avenue. The question is whether, if hopefully a lot of people access the warrant at Town Meeting through electronic means, what do we need in terms of Wi-Fi power and/or other support for large numbers of people accessing the exact same website or app at the same time?
That's a great point.
So yes, we'll need Wi-Fi at the meeting. So I'm just thinking, at the schools, is, is there Wi-Fi currently available?
Very reliable. There is, but it's not very reliable in the high school.
I mean, hundreds of students use it all at the same time.
I'm told that they fail regularly.
We should be able to figure that out, even if it's a local server.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Brenda, you're exactly right.
Yeah, great point.
We can't, we can't point to technology and then have it fail.
Yeah.
Correct, yes, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
There's one other hand raised, from Jenny Merhesh.
Jenny, now I see you.
Can you hear me?
I can, if you could just give us your name and address, please.
Sure, my name is Jenny Merhesh. I actually live in Waymouth, but I filed a petition for my business at 19 Whiting Street in Hingham.
Uh, is it related to this article?
I, I think it might be this one, this Article KK, the Notice of Town Meeting Warrant. I'm not sure, it could be.
Yeah, so as, as a resident of Waymouth, you would not be entitled to notice.
Right, but I had somebody file it, on my behalf, William Brett filed it for me.
This is not, this is a different, not on the agenda.
This is not something that's on the agenda tonight, but we'll make sure, what is just a general topic, so I can...
It's a liquor license.
Oh, it's a liquor, okay, so that is not something that's, that we're considering this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Is that something Sharon can follow up on?
Yeah, yeah, we can let her know.
Okay.
When we, when I put it on the thing, we'll let her know.
Okay.
Great.
Can I make a couple more points, please? Because I think, I think it's a good one, right? So a couple points, first of all, we're, and Eddie, as we know, people tend not to like change, right? So we're going to have to phase this in over time, right? So maybe we do it this year and let people know, hey, what's coming in the future is a QR code, is a Hingham app, is some other technological means. But, you know, in addition to cost savings, to printing all those warrants is so bad for our environment that we just waste all that paper on, you know, thousands of warrants that people don't, don't even look at. And again, we want people to Town Meeting, but what's our Town Meeting times, like 3, 400, right? And I, and we want to make, we want to get as many people as we want. We'd love, love to have thousand people go to Town Meeting, but the reality is, it's not. So we have to be conscious of what we're doing environmentally in addition to cost savings. But I think ultimately, we should talk about a plan to phase this in over time, that, that realizing technology's going to change, we're going to utilize that technology and just make it a better Town Meeting experience for everybody, saving money and make it environmentally sound as well.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I think in addition to those benefits, there's the benefit of electronic access, which makes it easier to search, to identify what's going on. If someone's speaking about something in a warrant article and it's, it's about a comment, you can spend a fair amount of time trying to find exactly where that is. If it's online, if, if it's on your, your phone or your iPad, you can actually search for it, get it immediately. So I think it provides for a, a, a better quality of, of product.
And greater accessibility. We, we did do some large print warrant books last year, but certainly, to your point, being searchable or have some sort of screen readers, it, it can be much more accessible.
Yeah, you're right, you can actually just blow up the, the size of the print a lot easier. Yeah, really good point. Okay, so we're going to, we held off on KK, and we can move to Article MM. Let me find MM, Alternative Methods for Public, for Publications of Legal Notice. This is not Notice of Town Meeting.
Correct, these are my initials, so Tom's making me do it. So this is an article, I know there has been legislation in the past to consider removing requirements that municipalities advertise in physical newspapers for different things, for permitting and adjudicatory hearings and, and other events. So this would be filings, that, that legislation has not passed, but a number of towns, I think, have put their own home petitions forward, and John Coffin looked at some of those. So this is recommending that we would file our own petition to get rid of those requirements. Right now, across the town, between $18,000 and $20,000 a year on these fees to advertise the newspapers. We typically use the Patriot Ledger. The newspapers are not in wide circulation anymore. I'm not sure how many folks get their notices from those areas in terms of, you know, hearing about these different meetings. So we'd like to be able to do it in electronic format, either on the town's website or in the Hingham Anchor or the electronic version of those papers. But that is the proposal.
So as I'm reading the proposal, it's to publish the newspapers on the, on the bulletin board outside the town clerk's office and in a local newspaper, in either electronic or paper form, or the town's website. So arguably, it would be on the bulletin board and the town's website, and that would be sufficient under this article. Am I, am I reading that correct?
We can make it, we can do.
No, 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 I just want to understand what's there, so...
Where are the best places for people to, to hear about these events? And just, I think with the advantage, advantages of technology, I think less and less folks are relying on the newspapers that are just not widely circulated anymore.
Yes, absolutely. And quite frankly, you know, when it used to be publication in the Hingham Journal, that, that circulation has really dropped. It would be, I, I think, helpful, one of the advantages of having it in a paper is, arguably a newspaper is something that's pushed out to the community. So if it's going to be on the town website, it also needs to be pushed out through the emails that we, we use. There needs to be some sort of push to the community in addition to a posting. But I, I really am in favor of getting rid of the obligation to publish imprinted newspapers where literally no one is seeing it. Bill, any, any thoughts?
Yeah, I love it, I think it's great, I think it's time to do this. You know, the, the legislature changed this maybe a year or two ago, and we can act on it. We, you know, we don't want to direct business to one particular electronic paper or format, but I just think people get their news from electronic media now, today. And if we have the, that option and the website as an option, I think it's great. And I don't think people will be negatively impacted by this change whatsoever.
Liz?
I agree with making the change. Do we have any sense of how, what the circulation is within Hingham of the Patriot Ledger? Or how many people are getting their news or notifications that way?
I don't have any idea, no. I could, I could reach out to the ledger.
Yeah, we could get the circulation by town, that's, that's...
I think that would be a nice data point.
Yeah.
Also, I want to use whatever budget we have for communications in the most effective and efficient way, because communications are lacking, we know that's an issue. I'm very interested in, to Joe's point, the push notification that is a technology associated with MyHingham that we explored. I'd like to go down that route, that's probably $20,000, much better spent than this. So, so I'm in favor of this, but I think there's some more work to do here.
So as I'm reading Section 2, would publication at the Hingham Anchor be acceptable?
I don't think we can specify one.
No, not, not saying that we're specifying, but if, if a board said, let's put it in the anchor, would that be sufficient?
Under this bylaw, yeah.
It's not, I don't think so, because it's not a local newspaper.
You might have to say local media outlet.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're not going to name anything specific, but I think in a local media, that's much better, media outlet.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, media outlet's a better way to, yes, yes.
And it should really be in a local media outlet of general circulation, as opposed to a media outlet focused on, you know, a particular trade or a media outlet associated like with the church, and if you don't belong to the church, they may not get you. So it would really be a media outlet of just general, of general circulation or of general interest.
That interest, okay. Yeah, website's on the circuit.
Right.
Okay, great.
So we...
We'll type that up and send it out, but you guys, you know, right, you know, adjust as...
Yeah, so I think you've heard from the three of us, a real interest in getting this accomplished.
Right.
And I know, at least from the second floor, they've got an interest in getting this done as well.
It's expensive and time consuming.
Yes. Okay, I believe we've covered all of the articles, and we can move. Again, I don't believe we have appointments or reappointments for this evening, Liz or Bill?
No.
None.
We have received several Town Meeting applications, so if we could prepare those for next week, I think that would be helpful.
And the next item is a public comment on items not on the agenda. Any members of the public? Seeing none, moving to Town Administrator Select Board reports, knowing that we just did that last evening, so it's unlikely we'd have a lot happening, but I'll start with Michelle.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
Liz? Prepared, not yet, to take a motion to adjourn, because before I do that, I need to make a declaration concerning executive session. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session, under Item 9 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. Item number nine is Executive Session 1st, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy regarding pending litigation, which is Invernee versus the Town of Hingham, in the Land Court, Docket Number 22, miscellaneous 468. And second, under Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider a real property transaction, because discussion in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. I am prepared to take a motion.
I would make a motion to enter executive session, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy regarding pending litigation, Invernee at L versus Town of Hingham at L, Land Court Department, Docket Number 22, miscellaneous 000468. Two, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider a real property transaction, because discussion in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. The board will not reconvene in open session.
Roll call vote.
Second.
Oh, sorry, did we have a second? Now we can do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an ayes, well, we will move into executive session and we will not reconvene in open session. Thank you.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the My Hingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the My Hingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using My Hingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the My Hingham app today and report issues